It's downtown.
It's just my reading.
I'm gonna keep them sure. Some better.
It might have been it's one where they kind of scheduled and trying to be there so.
How do I decide?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's for the. What is gonna be done.
That was definitely a good guess.
Oh, yeah.
You put it in me to consider them out.
And you know, I wrote it and it was not.
We don't have that. Right.
Yeah. There were four notes taken in our little car.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
What was this?
I said enough.
Good morning. So let's come first. So so you get that. And what is your name? You have a. You have part of it.
How did you get your few man today?
You wore the clothes.
Yes.
Oh.
Tell me.
I don't know how we should.
You wrote the mark.
Dave. That's what my talk is all about. So I have to.
Yeah.
This is.
We're all ready.
No, no, no. Yeah. So.
They can move from park to park. I know that.
There's no.
There's no.
So it's it's can be a problem. It's not what it is.
I.
I got I got a share picture with you from today.
It's a trailer. It's a trailer.
Did you take that?
Huh?
He gets it to that last line.
See, there's nothing.
Okay.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm gonna send you the pictures.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good.
Exactly.
Send over to Matt. Sure. Over.
Well, fine.
And until Denise and say. Mass transit here it is.
Here it is. We're there.
She she'd get a kick out of that.
Number eight.
You're in the election.
I have a. I have a. I can't separate.
She doesn't have. So maybe. Sister dark place. So it looks like today.
Yeah.
Well, last time everything's. They said. Who's sixteen?
Two six.
I'm doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where was I doing?
You're changing.
Oh, yeah. Is it everywhere?
They have.
Even more. First I can say.
Yeah, the old school taco.
I think she's checking down.
I'm.
But I think.
This is quite. So. So. Tom.
That could be. I don't I don't I don't order. They.
His wife had a procedure, it said.
Random.
Random.
No, of course, that's.
I know Steve.
The wife's her.
No, right here.
Oh, we're.
I mean.
Or.
Well, they're.
But they actually. I don't see if that. No, I want to check that. Literally make sense, but. I think.
My. It's. He's an absentee. It's a player. I'm like, wow, that one.
So.
That tower.
The one.
Cool.
Kind of.
What I mean.
Your sign.
I hope you.
I want to. I want to. And it's.
Oh, okay.
For now.
Oh, that's right. Really.
I'm surprised.
So I.
You're. There we go.
Maybe I'll send you the pictures.
So why do we have to?
So odd.
But someone like that.
There. They will.
That's reminded you that that.
Do my parents still?
Do you mean how they would.
They would.
I don't know.
Did you say?
It's.
It's. It's. The.
I don't.
No, I.
I see it this way.
Okay.
So. Took pictures. About how. It looks it's probably better than our.
It would be.
So I don't know if kids.
Victory.
What's.
There we go.
You were.
I want to play such a good guy to do that.
I.
This is.
I was telling my dad.
Yeah.
Did you think, you know?
Number two.
Twenty five. Oh, okay, so that's the.
It's like, God, come see.
On the other side.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause eighteen is going to be better.
It's pretty.
I can.
Something.
Oh, no, probably is on your right.
It's manmade.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not.
These are.
It's like.
Yeah. I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Hey, thanks for sharing.
Yeah, I mean, is that why is this their why?
I don't know.
Instead of.
Put a.
Do thicker do thicker news?
Yeah, we had a slow bit.
Okay. Um.
Yes.
It will be.
Well, now.
It was.
This is.
That's.
Specifically.
Wow.
It was kind of a little.
And I just.
I'm not.
What do you show off?
And that's.
Oh, not for reasons.
My.
So.
I'm.
What's gonna be?
Was it on the room?
And I felt like.
Yeah, I felt like.
So I. It was. You know. We would just come around. Yeah. Challenge. There won't be any. Access.
It was the sky.
It was the. And it was. Like. So has it been. And it was. So that being the case, it's one of the. Yours.
It is.
Of course. Do a. One. Okay. But. You know. So. Back to. Race. Well, these. You know. June.
Another.
Might as well. I didn't know. I just. I just. It was. Just. That's. No, not. I don't pronounce it again. So. Yeah, that was.
Okay.
Why? Sometimes.
Yeah.
This was. Where.
Are you ready to go, Jake?
I.
Okay. All right, let's. Let's go ahead and reconvene our meeting.
Really?
Yes. And. I think most of you were at Crest Park. And that was awesome to see. Well, we back went on over there. That's a major milestone forward for Orem. So it's exciting. I'll turn the time to Jake to. Talk to us about. This proposed registration or resolution for historic memorials.
Okay, excellent. So this presentation, this first resolution comes after a work session that we had. Maybe two work sessions ago. Where there's a presentation about potentially marking. Placing a memorial on a parcel on sixteen hundred. So just to provide context, based on what I observed and heard in that work session. This is the work that we rolled from that work session. After hearing the work session, I went back and I went through. What Orem has done in the past as far as historical preservation, historical markers. To try to be consistent with what city councils before have done and not necessarily recreate the will, but operate within already an existing framework. So the Historical Preservation Advisory Commission was created in nineteen ninety. It's in Article Two, Section Nineteen of our Orem City Code. Amongst the inner the duties and responsibilities that they were delegated to do is to inventory historic and archaeological sites within the city. To work towards continuing education of the citizens regarding historic preservation and the community history. And then also ascertaining procedures, knowledge ability requirements for including places on the National Registry of Historic Places. And that's all found in two nineteen two. And the commission acts as an advisory role, so their job is to to go through the community, identify these locations. And then ultimately. Report to the council on these archaeological or community history resources that we have. And then get direction from the council as far as ways to preserve them. In nineteen ninety five, we already the city adopted a historic marker design. This design was developed by Dale Brown, who was then a member of the Historic Advisory Commission. Sorry, Historic Preservation Advisory Commission. And he was also a local designer, so. It already adopted is our standard monument design. Now, we could go back and revisit this, but I'm just trying to provide what has already been done by prior councils. This this marker stands about three feet tall. It's metallic. And it looks very similar to this. This is a historic marker that is located. Near the corner of nine fifty north and eight hundred east, marking the location of a POW camp during World War Two. And so this resolution would would direct the Historic Advisory Commission to address some some gaps that are currently existing. Because while we as a city adopted this this format of a marker, there was no criteria adopted distinguishing what is historic. What one person might think is historic and another person may question the historical nature. You know, for me personally, my parents lived on sixteen hundred north and stayed basically in a home that is now a Del Taco. That's historic to me, but it may not be historic to anybody else. Crossway is one of those corporate trailers, and that's where my dad worked all growing up, funding his way to college. Again, historic to me, not so much so to the community at large. So what we want is.
Generally, to imagine generally speaking, like we do old homes, we're looking at fifty years and older. Is that that's kind of gonna. Cut off fifty years. Have you looked at like fifty years or do you have proposed?
Well, I have not proposed any specific criteria. Hopefully, I want the Historic Advisory Committee Historical Preservation Advisory Commission to develop this. It's part of the research I've looked at other cities, Philadelphia, Boston, other places with. What would be a pretty significant national history as well as local history to see how they have adopted programs. They all have criteria. Some of the areas are. Did the event occur within the location of the boundaries of the city? Sometimes we might have events that occur larger across multiple jurisdictions or. You have something like the Pleasant Grove benches. Where do you mark? You know, is it Pleasant Grove? Is it Orem? Did they blend across across the border? Where would you mark that? Age, I think that speaks to your point, Councilmember Larray, is how old do we want to consider what is historic? And then the integrity of the historical nature. Is there a direct association with the events of significance within Orem's history? And is there a close association with the lives of persons who were of historic importance within the community? So this was what we want the Historical Preservation Advisory Commission to look at, develop that criteria. And then ultimately apply that criteria and identify these locations throughout the city. And then coming to the city council for a thumbs up, thumbs down, saying, yes, this is a place we want to mark and educate the citizens on. And with that, then we would place this marker at that location. Frankly, there needs to be an audit of what is already existing within our community. I know we have these throughout the city in different locations. Another one that I'm aware of is the railroad station coming in from the Salt Lake City Railroad. We have one marking the discovery of Nero or the mammoth. But it would be nice to have a collected idea of this is what we've already designated as historic and this is worth locating. Jason, so we do have that. Archives we have when this was originally done, we cut that. Okay. Then I would just want the Historical Preservation Advisory Commission to publish it in a way that's more accessible to the public. Because again, the idea would be to educate citizens on on the history, unique history of Orem. So what efforts have we already taken to preserve unique properties? In May, the Orem City Council adopted ordinance two thousand twenty three zero zero one one three, creating a public facility zone. And within that, designating certain properties, those properties that are owned by the city. As well as other properties that are identifiable as having been paid by Orem resident taxes. And then placing them within the public facility zone. And part of that was to, you know, preserve the historic nature that these are open for the public and public use. Included in this is that parcel that was the topic of discussion. That work session, parcel located on sixteen hundred north. It is owned by the city and is currently zoned as a public facilities zone parcel. So it is already protected as as such. Why would we want to adopt a resolution like this now? I think it's important as we're looking at, just as Ms. Barron represented and presented in the work session is. You know, we've we have celebrated our centennial. We celebrated that approximately four years ago. And we are no longer a new and upcoming city. We're a well-established city. And we have parts of our city that are historic that need to be preserved. If you consider where we've been, the old city hall on on Center Street to where we're going, the new city hall complex is currently under construction. And the adoption of the Gold Star Family Memorial, the idea that we want to draw attention to various segments of our community and we want to honor and memorialize those. I believe it was the city council's desire to have a women's and children's memorial. That we would definitely want to mark the parcel sixteen hundred north with some sort of memorial, but it may be a larger women's and children's memorial would be. More appropriate than other vocation. It would be more accessible or. Not right off sixteen hundred north and behind a quick quack. Again. At the direction of the council, but this is kind of what this resolution's aimed at doing is providing city staff with the direction toward working towards those goals. The proposals are to basically reaffirm that we want to protect and preserve the historic and archaeological resources that our community has. That we want to direct the Historical Preservation Advisory Commission to develop criteria for the designation and then ultimately the approval. And placement of markers throughout the city. That we would like to have an audit or a report as accessible to the public as to where these markers are and what their historical significance already is. And then number five, I think, is is a unique way to. Approach. This Heritage Park tank site. Is currently, we have a a walking trail that runs around where the water tank would be. And is to have a corresponding historical marker. So we'd have this marker somewhere in the city, wherever that historical site is, but we'd have a corresponding marker in the Heritage Park. So as you walk around the park, you can learn of the heritage and the history of Orem City. And so we're already moving towards placing that historic cabin that would be restored and placed within the Heritage Park site. That we would then also include these markers. We would direct staff to the council would direct staff to continue efforts to preserve the unique nature of the PF Zone lands, including the sixteen hundred north parcel. Ultimately, what that would look like from a staff side is that the city would continue to move forward with plans to build a wellhouse on that lot. But also incorporating landscaping benches, a memorial marker there on sixteen hundred north to mark to mark the site. And then seven is. Requesting city staff to work towards the planning and development of other memorial monuments, including a women's and children's monument to be placed within the city. So that's what this resolution does, and I'm happy to address any questions or concerns.
Do you want to kind of have like a brand so they all kind of have like a look like. Historical Orem, I don't know. Is there a way to, I know when the Elliott Church did their faith in every footstep, like they put them on graves, they all had a similar. Feel.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I want to do want to have a look that if when someone saw. It would. So it looked like, yeah, I thought you're thinking you'd keep that on.
Unless the city council decides that they want to reopen the design and approve a different design. I do think it is appropriate for us to have a a unique look, a signature look for what these markers are. So when residents and visitors see that monument, they know what it is. Because yeah, the faith in every footstep monuments are markers, but also Utah history markers you see along the side of the road. They're all the same, you know, font size. The markers are are all very similar, so you know what it is.
Do we have.
I think that is attractive, isn't it?
Do we have many of these markers that we that we updated the design that we'd have to change?
How many markers do you think we have? Somewhere in the ten fifteen range.
Yeah.
We have a historic. Not only at these locations, but at this sort of size.
Yeah, I think we definitely do it at distance. They're not very. It'll stand out a little. Yeah, you'd miss it.
And and so we didn't have to redo them all at once, whatever it's like cost. Do it over time.
Correct.
But I think it would make sense to. It's about twenty five years since they did that, so it makes sense to revisit it, update it, freshen it up, make it jump out. And we've got all the bands, the USA branding, some of these other things. So it would be, yeah, I think you could update it.
I think through language that the advisory council prepared and updated or refreshed design.
And you and you may be able to do it in a way that you could still, it would still tie into the existing ones, you know, if you do it over time kind of thing, but.
I'm really ashamed to say I've never seen this. I've never seen this throw a marker in any.
That's why I might wonder.
Any of these exist.
That's why I might wonder.
I would treat out the corner right there.
But I mean to.
I'm like, my kids, but they never saw.
You to the mayor and to each point is they do blend in quite well with the surrounding area. Because unless you you're looking for it, you typically you don't jump out.
Well, doesn't it make a question then to put maybe a dark darker color around it or gold or something that would make it? I don't know, reflect. I don't know. I don't know what.
I think a little, I don't know, little pavilion over top would draw attention.
I think we want to get a a design for to.
Yeah.
You know, to basically give us some proposals and work on some things. And the intent would be to, you know, make them really stand out. They're visible and people are aware of them. And then I think that idea about tying it all in Heritage Park is. It would be great, and that would be a reason to, you know, to do all this. So and and kind of where this ties to is. You know, it's this has been brought up, you know, this is kind of back to Orem's heart. And as we are getting built out to have our heart intact and have the story intact is really important.
Absolutely. The way I've been summarizing is we want to show that we have heart and we want our heart to continue to grow bigger and bigger.
I agree.
We're not.
We want it to be three sizes.
Mayor, could I say something?
Sure.
So I think this is a great opportunity for for this commission, along with our awesome social media team. To put some things together. Just to make people aware that these markers are available throughout the city, where they're located, and maybe just a little bit of brief history. From someone on the commission telling about it or or another citizen kind of teaching us about what happened there and why it's significant to our history in Orem.
So our, because I'm over the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission, so we are scheduling a presentation to be on the agenda for the city council. This commission's only been there for a year, right? Only been together for years. So, yeah, I would say let's get that. They're doing some great things. We're really looking forward on that. So I agree with that.
And maybe develop a look and feel for Heritage Park and then take that branding, whatever that looks like, and then, you know, put it across. I I see a nice branding, but how they're done, how they're framed, I don't know.
Yeah.
I I think it just makes sense that. It makes sense to translate to the other places. So people start understanding, knowing it, look for this, look for that, make a little scavenger hunt. I don't know. You can make it so that you can. Have kids kind of find them, get a prize. I don't know. I I don't even know where these are.
We we also have our new benches, you know, with our morals and some USA love road, that we could probably do a better job of getting. Benches at these different.
Oh, yeah.
Markers as well. And.
I like it.
And to throw the, you know, the to jump on the same table with the social media is something that I experienced is during COVID, we we went to a lot of different state parks. So my son could get, you know, a stamp in the different state parks. And the state parks has a program where they have like little geocache located near them, so you can look for that. So it's great for kids. So again, going off of the education is developing a program similar to that to to engage children and families to go down to the city.
Very.
Good. The Sierra Museum right next to the Sierra Theater is is really a precious. Thing that we need to tie that in with with what the city's doing. They've got some great World War Two uniforms from people that are that lived in Orem and it's really fantastic.
And and this resolution recognizes that significant role that the Heritage Museum has and the relationship that the city has with Sierra in providing free vision to that museum. The importance that that museum has in teaching people, residents of of Orem. The history of Orem.
But and to that point, I mean, so we don't just wind up with, you know, a number of random historical monuments. Kind of you want to have the design consistent, but you also want to kind of have the story consistent and what is the history of Orem? And basically that story would tie into these markers and it would all come together so it, you know, can be used for education.
So we've already kind of initiated that discussion with Adam too, and he was happy to kind of open up, you know, there. A database that of course the museum itself and should work with us to incorporate that. Consistent information. Any other direction concerning to questions?
That's great.
I think it's great.
I would just like to kind of emphasize again that if we can. Seek an area for the Women's and Children's Memorial Park. And kind of have that at the top of our agenda to have be on the lookout for that project to make it happen sooner rather than later. I'll give her that second.
But aren't you still aren't you are we still looking at? Where that monument would be would be a small little park, right? It'd be grassy area or whatever, right?
So as we've looked at with the potential building of a wellhouse there, I think it's a half acre parcel. The wellhouse would, again, Chris step in if I'm misstating anything, the wellhouse requirements would typically take about a quarter acre of that parcel. Because the wellhouse itself has to be built and then we have to fence it off to protect the well resources based on, you know, regulations and whatnot.
I mean, I think.
But then it still needs a quarter acre.
You got a mine or something or something, right?
Yes.
At least you're. You know, there's something there that you can go as a family and find it.
Yes.
Maybe a mini gazebo, some rose hedges, you know, just but I understand what you're saying. You're saying it would be a small park. And I think kind of the discussion we had last time, of course, and you have outlined it in this resolution, of course, is to seek for a larger parcel. For this. Unique Women's and Children's. Orem.
That's what I understand. This is an and and.
Yes.
On either or.
And I'm I'm just trying to emphasize the and and, so thank you for clarifying that, I guess.
Yeah. So and I think we're.
And make sure we're all on the same page and we're all on the same page.
I I think we're we're open to ideas in terms of, and where we might have kind of the the broader limited children's historical memorial. In addition to the specific more or her at sixteen hundred.
Thank you, yes.
Right. We talked a little bit about this in a bit, but if there's anything we can do with that wellhouse, you know, to incorporate. The outside look of that, so it ties in with this memorial, so it's bigger than.
Tourism.
The elevation or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
So Chris and Ryan. Maybe just to repeat and emphasize, so just like we've done some additional treatments to wellhouses like at the Heritage Park and kind of other well.
So just like we've done some additional treatments to wellhouses like at the Heritage Park and kind of other wellhouses where they to make them kind of fit within the neighborhood, we wanna do some some treatments to the wellhouse that are associated with it not to kind of historic.
How about a pioneer house for the cover of the wellhouse?
At least, at least with some treatment, yeah. I don't know to what extent, but yes.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking, it's something so when you look at it, it looks like a memorial.
Yeah.
And by the way, there's a wheelhouse, this kind of camouflage that back.
I like it.
Think like brick, I mean brick or some sort of, um tell me what your vision is for that, is it, is it how we finish the outside, is it the roof, is it
Yes, like you have this
the door that we have?
You've got this half big or you've got this chunk of wood to the wellhouse, whatever. And so if you can kind of camouflage that, make it like blend in, so when you look at it, it looks like a memorial
Okay.
rather than a wheelhouse, if it's possible.
A conjunction of the Jake was stating regarding the Heritage Park, we do have the Pioneer House that is located, will be located on the property. That Pioneer House wasn't too far from the site. Oh, you know, they're not jointly connected, but it is connected in pioneer nature, so maybe it could be incorporated somewhat on the site as well, where you could, we could actually walk in and have a look at the inside or whatever. Provide access to that, I don't know. But we would, we certainly will incorporate whatever we can there in that site. I do have one concern with that particular site and that is traffic and parking and the ability for people to access that site safely. Uh just a concern that we'll have to address no matter where it goes, that location.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you for that presentation. Okay, moving on, presentation, proposed twenty twenty four city council schedule, Teresa.
All right, for the city council, I um this was in the packet, but I printed one up, so you can kind of look over it. So the idea is um for you to just check these dates and see if you're okay with what we have scheduled. If there is something that needs to be changed, that we could do that prior to the December meeting. Uh because in December we want to um uh vote on and approve this schedule. And so just a couple of things, we um just to note, because of the primaries in June, they that would fall on when we would regularly meet, so we chose to have just the one meeting, but it would be moved back, it would be a third week instead of the second or the fourth. So that's one um difference. We did only pick one for July in the past, we've um kind of with the holidays only had one. And same with November and December, the holidays often um get in the way of that. But other than that, um we are planning the two meetings each month on the second and fourth Tuesday. There are a couple other things that we've got in there, and we wanted to get the new council members swear in, at least on the record, but it technically was supposed to be the first Monday of the year, of course, nobody wants to be here on January first. So we um had chosen to um to go with Wednesday the second. So that's also a date that you could um, you know, potentially change if you feel like that's um gonna be problematic. And then um tentatively, they're thinking the retreat would be the twenty sixth and twenty seventh. Um the reason it's tentative is that potentially would change depending on if they're able to get the location and different things like that. But we at least wanted to uh get that on there for you to, you know, put on your calendars. Um and then I did try to put a few dates on there that, um just to kind of give us a heads up, like spring break and some of the conferences that either you will be involved with or um the city manager's office would be involved with. Does anyone have any questions about the schedule or any concerns?
So if this
And you can, you know, you can always send me something later if all of a sudden you're like, oh, wait, we're gonna have that thing and you know, you can make that adjustment as well before December.
Yeah, so this is our best recommendation, stuff of what we know now for our schedule for the twenty twenty four year. So if you have any feedback for Teresa, please uh submit those before our next meeting, otherwise we'll
Wow.
Seems like every year there's always some little changes here and there, but we do have to, we do have to adopt a schedule for the year.
And we can amend it, we did one this year where we had to make um amend it because of the election being pushed back. And so, I mean, it's not locked in stone, so if something does come up, we can work on that. So um I'll just leave that for you guys to think about and if there's a problem, then let me know. And then the other one is we are coming to the end of Debbie's time as Mayor Prokén. And so I was just, um when I had spoken with Mayor Young, we had um already decided or he had already kind of decided for twenty twenty four, and so I did not make any changes to that. Um so unless you have um a reason to change that, we also go forward with um Dave Spencer um being Mayor Prokén starting in January. And then followed by Tom McDonald, and then after that, um we would get together and decide how the next year would look.
Okay.
Okay?
You made the closing there, I agree.
Should this your new job allow?
Yes.
He's opposed.
Does that your new job allow you some flexibility or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Are you willing to give up your reign as Mayor Prokén?
I have to, December thirty first, I
You're useful, James.
I have no power.
And then just one other thing to note is once we propose this, then um I will work with Mayor Young to um for the other schedules, which are, you know, the pledge and um prayer um assignments, and then also like the newsletter and um council reports. So once we approve that, then we'll um, cause this doesn't have to be approved, I'll just maybe put something together and you'll look over it and make changes as you see fit. Does that work?
Sure, sure.
So when when do we, you totally see Sam, when do we preserve those rooms? They're all the same.
You should probably start.
As soon as you, as soon as you get the
Now, so may I ask a question? So it's like in the past, we were from the messaging
Sorry, yeah.
the monthly messages for council members, we were gonna skip December. So then it bumped everybody to a different month every time, so you know, I'm not always writing a Thanksgiving message or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Now, are we still, can can I, I just wanna double check and make sure we were still kind of just doing a council-wide message on December and
Yeah, we can totally do that. We we did a council-wide message in June with with that same idea.
Okay.
So it should be different, right? Or is it gonna just repeat back on? Cause who had January?
Um so So in on this current one, it has um it's it's kind of strange because it has Terry Peterson and then January and then Lanay in January. And there is not actually a December on here, so I don't know if the intention was for December to be like that.
Council.
And then they were, you know, either Terry or Lanay would have January, I'm not sure, cause I didn't create it.
Okay.
But currently there is not a December, there's only two Januaries.
Maybe that was our, we can talk about that.
Yeah. So I'm assuming probably you will be January and then we'll work. Um are you January or? Yeah, cause you were Janu- I don't think you were January this year.
I don't, no.
Who's January this year?
Oh, maybe, I don't know. There's no January on here anymore.
Oh, good.
Jeff, it starts with Jeff in February. So maybe, maybe you were January.
So Teresa.
I don't think I know.
Tom, Councilman Tom McDonald just touched the statements already written for December.
Hey.
Sure, I don't know.
Yeah, so Terry was January uh this year, so.
Well, if if you're November or you're doing, that just, I don't know. I didn't make it, it's very confusing to me, but so Tom's So Tom's got one?
One year, one last year you were Yeah, so he'll do December and uh November, yeah. Cause the reason we skipped, we did January or June together was because that's the Orham Fest message, that's just uh inviting
Oh, so maybe that's where everything got shipped again.
I think so.
So then that would put Lanay in January, cause she was um after Tom.
Have you ever matched up when they do their council reports?
Yeah, are they matched up or is it off not?
It's matched up.
Okay, so that's when
It looks like to me, so like Jeff, well, Jeff does the council report in January and the newsletter in February. Debbie does it in
Well, I will.
February and then March, so they were kind of just matched up but offset just one month, but.
Would be easier to just do the same thing, like you're right by the station and reporting, yeah, this is your month, yeah, this you're gonna report, you're gonna write the message.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter to me.
That would be easy.
It just feels like easier than handling it.
It just makes sense.
Yeah.
And I just did one, right?
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, it would make more sense to me too. So we can do that, um I'll just start with
But I wanna pick, I wanna pick my month.
Cause I don't think we've had Lanay.
There'll be a draft.
I don't think you've recorded for, it's been a minute before you've reported. Well, you'll report in December, so maybe we'll just not have a report in December and start with January.
Okay.
And then we'll be right on, we'll be That makes sense, I think it would
I'm gonna pick my month.
Be a lot, if you just know you're January, you'd be both.
I think Teresa's telling us what it
So I will, am I doing something in January?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So
Real real quick, the January.
That you're wrong for you, Tom, with it.
I won't worry about this January one, if you guys
Well, I think it's Tom because I think it sounds like we got off one month, and so that makes sense, why Tom would have
That makes Tom
So I think we're good, and then I will also, um like I did this time, I'll try to put what you need to do in the calendar invite as well. Um once we get this approved, we'll do the calendar for the year, we'll put that in there so that if you just go on your phone or whatever, you you can see, oh, I don't have an assignment or I do have assignments. Not if you've noticed, but I, your assignments are in there. Okay, then we have one other thing that's not on the schedule. Um we, uh Brent had sent out some emails about how we're going to handle the canvas because it's such a short amount of time, like I watched the video from two years ago and I think it took thirteen minutes from start to beginning. Um and so it it felt a little bit um like a lot to ask everyone to come in for that fifteen minutes. So we had proposed doing um a satellite one here and Debbie as Mayor Prokén would be located here and then the rest of you would zoom in. The only issue that we have with that is that my report has to be signed by each of you that votes. And so what we are proposing so that each of you doesn't have to find time on Wednesday to make it into my office to sign that report is um I just have a paper and I will send this to those who are on Zoom. It just says, I give a authorization to use this signature to sign the twenty twenty three general election canvas digitally if I vote I in the Zoom meeting to be held on December fifth at four P M. And then you'll just print, sign your name, I will take your signature and add it digitally. Um and then that way, you're, I'm not expecting each of you to find time on Wednesday or Thursday to come in and sign that. Are we okay with that?
Wait, how we can do that like today if we want to?
Yes, so I have the paper right here, I'll give it to each of you, if you wanted to sign it
Then we get that over.
then we'll work on that and then I'll email to the two that are not here, have them sign it, I'll have them all ready. And then whoever is there, um as long as we have four, then we can go forward. But if everyone's there, I'll just have signatures and we're ready on.
So to summarize, this is just to get your authorization to use the signature in a digital format.
Okay, any objections?
Any of you that know, please, you just, you just sign it, no, make it
And if you happen to vote nay, then we would not um use your signature. So if that, if that happens to be the case, or if you're not there, we would um just not use your signature.
You want me to sign it tonight or or?
And then You're gonna be there, you don't necessarily need to sign this, um if you want to, I guess you could, but um where we already know you're you're on site. And of course, if any of you choose to come in instead of doing the, that's also an option. Uh we're not, you know, refusing you uh to go.
And then you usually have those really nice like little court ready for us, would that just be available when we wanna pick it up on?
Oh, yeah, you mean, so we can send that digitally so that you can have it um available
At that time.
and you know, as you're voting.
Perfect.
So I can shoot that out to you, you know, prior to the meeting so that you have the opportunity to physically see
Read it.
That will, that will absolutely be an option.
And I've been told that those that have been attending remotely uh have noticed the 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 excellent upgrade that our new A D system and Zoom Room software is is working better than ever, so so it'll hopefully be um a better experience for for each of you as as well.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you, Teresa. All right, um as far as Terry, I think we're reporting commission. Oh, is that to be, was it, oh, okay. No, no, I was, um so uh planning commission is is the Bigwood and um I really appreciate how seriously they take their job. Uh they do go out to these properties uh and um that's very enjoyable for me just to be there and watch the process, so and and I do think it's important as a member, you know, whoever takes that position in the future, that we're there. Those meetings, I think it means a lot to them, you know, we're there supporting them. Even though we don't, we don't have a vote, they had a closed meeting last time, Jake, I guess, talked about litigation and um and so and I'm not biased, which is cool, I mean, cause I'm not on the planning commission, but I thought we're there supporting, so that's going really well, I'm very happy with the people there, they're very diligent. Uh Madeline, who is the chair, is doing a fantastic job. So uh and I think all the people there are there. Oh, one one issue, and I was gonna mention this, I don't, if this is Brian or do I tell this to, but uh it's come up that it's, it is hard to hear in this room. And one of the members of the planning commission was told, he said, I I don't know if I can continue serving unless there's a way I can hear better in this room. And I know this, that'll go away for this, you know, when we get our new building, but I don't know if there's a way we could put in a you know, some kind of a sound system or a mic or something. Depends on the voice, some voices you hear great, I don't hear any like that, but anyway, that would be that's a suggestion that they have, and I don't wanna lose that particular person, cause he can't hear, but it's like he told me once, he said, I voted one way, I couldn't, wasn't sure, cause I couldn't hear anyways. Anyway, just a thought, I don't know, I don't know how we handle unless we have mics in here or, I don't know.
We can, we can work into it.
But
Table mics or something.
I was looking for Carson, he's been helping us with our system, but we can reach out and see if there's a
So that's planning commission, Utah Lake Authority is another one of my responsibilities. That's very interesting right now, just going, Eric Ellis just resigned, uh is now the city manager at Linden.
Yeah.
Our vendor, excuse me, our vendor, uh and um so we'll be meeting, uh we worked, we were gonna be in December, now they want to be in November. Uh I will suggest, Mayor, that we definitely wanna be part of the committee to choose uh the new person, so I'll follow up with you when I tell me the dates to do that.
Okay.
So um it is controversy with the Utah Lake Authority, there's still is and, you know, we definitely wanna have a strong voice at the table, make sure our concerns are met in Orham. So um so that's ongoing and that's the two. I don't blank what my other one is, anyway, but I know there's another very significant one, Ben, I think we will have. But uh but those two are I mean, those two take a lot of time and effort.
Yeah, yeah.
You're working on on those all the time. All right, thank you, Terry. Let's just run through the rest of this agenda. Um item number three, cut out the border for the next meeting. Item four, invocation, it's very fun, is your husband, Derek?
He's here and I'm helping my five-year-old grand son, he's all dead, we're doing the pledge.
I just saw him walk in.
He'll do the pledge, but I'll let you know, if his name is Weston Ross. Wes, something you know because he used to, my baby son, he'd come along, did lots of
His name is Weston Ross.
Weston Ross, yeah. If he doesn't, if he doesn't get too nervous, I think I think of it.
Well, I'll probably uh for you to
Okay, that's good.
Your husband, Weston.
Okay, that's great.
Item six, uh is a presentation, Central Falls and Water District, Orham, and the report.
Look, just so you know, Steve Brown is on the debate tonight, he's
He's what?
He's proud of the people there.
Okay.
So I'll be, I'll be just reading that.
Oh, okay.
This is my chair at that board.
Okay. Remember that? Okay. And then item six point two, I'll have a presentation on emergency preparedness. And Steve, row before, that's he, Stevenson. Still good?
Good, sir. Mark, gee, is, is Heath gonna be here?
He's here. We don't know. And then.
Go ahead.
And then I think, uh, Debbie was gonna share, uh, some information about the former mayor Stella Welch with her passing and stuff.
Okay. Should we do that, um?
Can we do that for that six point three maybe, or do you want to do?
Yeah, well, let's, let's do that. Let's make that six point O.
Okay.
Um. And we start off.
And when did we say our last name? Welch, Welch?
Welch.
Welch. After many times, but I should call it.
Okay, so we'll do that as the first item, six point O. And then six point one, six point two. We'll have personal appearances. Then we'll have going to our consent items. We've got eight point one approval of meeting minutes. Eight point two, Metropolitan Water Board, Water District Annual Board. That's just an appointment. That's Casey Shaw, Alex Lot, Chris Sher.
I'm not sure about Chris.
Not sure.
I don't know anything.
I, I thought Casey Shaw just got called on a mission. Am I wrong?
Casey Shaw did.
And so does that mean he's still gonna do this?
Yeah, he's a resident of Orem and has helped us serve on the board when he's away. We have one board member that is serving in the Philippines right now.
Okay.
We have three meetings in the year. One is a Christmas party. So.
That's my card of committee.
I want to be on that board.
I know, I know Laney wants to be a part of it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that he, so will he zoom in or will he schedule one?
Yes. We've been doing that, coordinating through, in the Philippines through our, our device. Won't this make it harder for Casey to make a Christmas party of?
He's coming. This first meeting will be the Christmas party too, so, if you appoint.
Like, can he wear the Edwin sweater? No, I'm just kidding. Okay.
Okay. That's interesting. Okay. Eight point three, uh, Britton Renolfson and Robert McFattis, Perification Advisory Commission. And item number one four, uh, Form Advisory Commission, Katrina Blal, 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 Blal.
She's been great. Um, you know, her and her husband are both, um, they, they were part of the, all the other playground.
Blal, Blal. Blal.
You know, they're, they're just great. And I, I think they're our two of our anchors of marketing.
She's done the hospitality term.
Hospitality term, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So that's a good, yeah.
Yeah, I, I get a lot of support on that, uh, that nomination. So we got item nine point nine, uh, scheduled items, nine point one resolution. Notice we intend to con- consider the boundary adjustments resolution considered more on Prolo City. That's other Canyon Road.
And that was three. This is only the resolution to start the process, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll go through that. But yes, this is just basically the resolution to start the process and then things have to be worked out from there. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't even start the process unless we thought it had a chance of working out, but let's just work out all the details.
And then are we voting three times or there's three motions on that?
So there are going to be three separate resolutions. Because there's technically three different boundary adjustments.
So how do we do that in terms of when we vote?
Just submit that address in there?
Do these motions for the first address and then you?
So, so. So we should have resolutions on each one and the agenda, so in the packet itself. In the packet. So everywhere where there's a semicolon on there is a new location per boundary.
So you just do this whole thing with that address and skip the other two each time?
So, yes.
And then the next time is.
Yes.
Doing your.
Okay, so you guys got that?
I did have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, item nine point two, park lighting and closure ordinance.
Wait, can I interrupt for just a minute? So in the resolutions, it has more specific language. That's what you want us to say, Jake? Like the three point one acre, point three point one eight acres, all of that, okay?
Yes, and we can use the resolution.
So the resolution language.
So.
I printed out the resolution that I have there in front of me, so I could do.
I mean, does that be made?
I might be making all.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I'll second you every time, I promise.
Okay. I'll get the language.
Okay. If you got that worked out. Item nine point two, park lighting enclosure ordinance.
And, uh, that will be a very similar presentation as our last work session. Uh, the notable change is we have removed Winter Park from the list of parks where a permit can be obtained. And that would be addressed in the presentation.
Okay. Item nine point three, another resolution, recertification of the Orem Municipal Justice Court.
Yes, and that, um, a pretty standard operation, but.
Cause that was pretty long in our packet, all of that.
Yes, there's a lot of material there, but the, this is a pretty pro forma thing as we've done in the past.
Okay.
Nothing new?
No.
In all, everything I read.
Yeah. Something we do about every forty years. Yes, and, and again, in the presentation, I think we've done it now. This will be our fourth or fifth time recertifying the justice court.
And then ten, monthly financial report, that's just a by the way.
Yeah, so.
It looks, it let me be mentioned.
Well, there's no vote on it or anything, but if anyone has any questions, Brandon, it's here. Yeah, this is something she provides every month that we include in the presentation.
So.
So there's no public comment period or anything in that? Just if we have specific comments, it's on.
So should I bring it up?
I don't think we ever, there's no vote on it.
Yeah, so it's, that's where you would just skip it.
Yeah.
Unless it, there was an issue with it. All right, and city manager information items and, uh, adjournments. Hey. Any questions? And one adjournment, let's see, yes, please.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And, uh, we'd like to call this meeting to order. We've got, uh, two city council members that are, uh, joining in via Zoom. Uh, Tom McDonald and, and Jeff Lamson are both on Zoom. So that will give us a full group. We'll start out, um, Debbie, if you'd like to introduce who's doing the invocation, the pledge.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, this is my family. They're here in the second row. My husband Jim, my grandson Weston, and my grandson Clark and my father Blaine. And this is my last time getting the prayer and pledge, and I thought it'd be good to have them finished. Weston, do you want to give the pledge at all? Okay. So my husband, um, will do an invocation and then my father Blaine will give the pledge of allegiance. So we'll start with the prayer by Jim.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the blessings that we have here in this country, this opportunities that we have to join together in this meeting tonight. And Father, we pray for thy guidance and spirit to be with us, that we can make good decisions and be able to take care of the needs of the city. Father, we're thankful for all the many blessings that we have and the great joy that we have living here in the city of Orem and the blessings it offers us, the protections and a fire and, and police and, and the education that we have and the library and the books that we have to learn from and the great opportunities that await us here. Father, we say these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
As my father's coming up, Veterans Day was recently, my father was in the Utah National Guard in the engineering unit and he helped build the road down Park City Main Street. Right, Dad?
Went over the mountain, American Park.
And over the mountain.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both for doing that. Move to items number six. Item number six point zero. Uh, Stella Welsh, a former mayor here in Orem, passed away last week. And, uh, we've asked Debbie to tell us a little bit about her.
On behalf of the Orem mayor and city council, we want to publicly acknowledge and recognize and celebrate the life of one of our city's most legendary civil servants. Stella, who served on the city council from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-seven and then became Orem's first elected female mayor in nineteen ninety-two. She served in that role until nineteen ninety-seven. She moved to Orem in nineteen sixty and led a full life of service and love for the community. She was key in the creation of the Mount Timpanogus Park and helped bring Timpanogus Regional Hospital to Orem. She's also helpful with the land and zoning issues on the Wood Perfect Complex, now Canyon Park. Stella's daughter Kathy noted, I would watch as she took phone calls from citizens who had various concern. It never mattered how early or how late the calls came. Mom always took the time to address the issues that mattered to those callers. After her political career was over, she served on the boards of Orem organizations such as Habitat for Humanity, Kids on the Move, and the Regional Hospital. She was married to her husband Stan for seventy-four years and they have eight children and many, many grandchildren, great grandchildren, and even great, great grandchildren. Stella was an incredible example of how much good one person can do for their city. She will be greatly missed by her legacy of service, as her legacy of service lives on. And we send our heartfelt condolences to her family and appreciate her fine service. Do we know when the funeral will be at all? Saturday at eleven, okay.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. She was a remarkable lady. And we appreciate that. We'll move on to the regular business. Item six point one. We've got a presentation on the Met- Metropolitan Water District of Orem Annual Report. And Chris Sher, he's gonna lead that conversation.
Mayor, uh, and Council, it's a privilege, privilege to be here with you tonight. When I started at the city in nineteen ninety-four, Mayor Welsh was our, our, our mayor. So it was a honor working with her. She was a great woman and a great leader for our community. Um, like to mention to start off, first of all, I'm not Steve Brown, who was supposed to be here tonight, but he's, uh, he's on business traveling, was unable to attend. He asked us to present. Uh, so he is the chairman of the Metropolitan Water District of Orem. Uh, I'm Chris Sher, I'm the vice chairman. He asked me to, to, uh, to lead this discussion. Um, we have with us in our audience, we have Liddell Gilman. If I could ask Liddell and then also Tim Crandall to stand. Uh, they've been serving on our board. Liddell's been with us for, uh, twelve years and, um, and Tim has been here for his first term, which is a six-year term. So, so we have two others representing us, uh, the, the board here tonight. I just wanted to recognize them. Uh, to my right here, we have Reed Price, who is our general manager of the Metropolitan Water District of Orem. We also have, uh, Rick Lewis, Alex Lot, and Carl Cook, who are not here tonight, so we'd like to excuse them. Ruth Ann. Ruth Ann Ivy serves and has served as our secretary for more than 20 years. And so we do have a long history of service in this district. We wanted to move forward with our presentation on providing you some history and then telling you about what's some of the things that have happened over the last year in the Metropolitan Water District. As you all know, the city of Orem was incorporated in 1919. In 1935, the Metropolitan Water District Act was created by the state of Utah, by the state legislature. Our leaders at that time decided it was a good idea to create a water district to look out for the interests of the community moving forward. And so as such, they created the Metropolitan Water District of Orem in 1935, shortly after that law was enacted. Typically with the water districts, they mimic the boundaries of the city that they serve if they were created by a municipality, which they typically are. Back in '35, the boundaries of the city were anticipated to be approximately 2,000 north on the north end to 2,000 south on the south end, from approximately the river to the lake. It wasn't yet determined what boundaries were going to be as we know them today. In fact, Vineyard was incorporated, actually not that many years ago, so a few decades ago. So I mentioned in a discussion with Mayor Young recently at our water tank field trip, we were talking about water, water shares, water rights, and what kind of a portfolio we have, if it's a healthy portfolio and so forth. And I wanted to respond to him now more formally in this meeting tonight by saying, under current law, under current statutes, and barring any changes to any laws and statutes that we have on the books today, Orem City's in an excellent position. We have an excellent portfolio of water resources, including groundwater, surface water, and spring water. And so we can't tell what laws might bring into the future, but under today's current conditions, we have enough water to provide for our citizens under drought conditions, even when our city is completely built out. So our forefathers have looked out for the city of Orem and the future of the city since 100 years ago. We are invested in several irrigation companies as a district. In fact, there are seven either irrigation companies, canal companies, or other water associations where we have shares in those companies. Those companies actually hold the water rights. In other words, they own the water that we have the ability to use as a shareholder in those companies. We also have water in, by contract, Metropolitan Water District entered into a contract with the Central Utah Water Conservancy District in the late 70s for 7,520 acre feet of water. To most people, that doesn't, they have a hard time wrapping their mind around it. So to give you an idea, a standard size, American-sized football field covered in about nine inches of water is one acre foot of water. To give you kind of an idea. In other words, we have 7,520 acre feet of those quantities available to us through the Central Utah Project. The Metropolitan Water District actually engaged in that agreement with Central Utah Water in the late 70s. Since 2016, we have been paying $1.189 million for that water annually. We will continue to do so as a district and as the city through 2047, when that contract will need to be renegotiated. So in other words, we don't own that water. We don't own the shares. We own a right to use the water for which the Central Utah Project owns. And so there's a distinguishing mark there to understand the difference between having a right to use the water and actually owning the water right. Are there any questions regarding that, anything that we've stated thus far? Okay.
And that cost for that lease is variable, right? It can change over time?
Well, it has gone up with each allotment. Each allotment is around 500 acre feet. That started in about 2,000. And so from that point moving forward, we're at 7,520. So each allotment has a specific cost, a unit cost per acre foot. Cumulatively, it averages out to be about $177 an acre foot. It doesn't vary over time. It'll stay that through 2047. All right. We typically pay for these.
As our new 10 million gallon water tank comes online at some point, tell me, does that affect? Is that just helping us save what we'll need for the future? Tell me how that's going to work into what you're talking to us about.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is storage versus supply. There are two different topics altogether. So supply is what we're referring to here. Metropolitan Water just helps us to plan for the supply needed for projected demands starting since 1935, all the way into the future, that build-out. Build-out could happen around 2050, 2060, we don't know. We don't know what the population will be then either. However, we refer to the Governor's Office of Management and Budget for those values. Right now, we're at roughly 98,000 or so, and we anticipate we could be, depending on the councils over time, you know, maybe around 125,000. That's what the planners would represent to us. And so we have to plan for those numbers and water demands based on those values.
But as the water is stored, I'm assuming it'll be stored over time and used as it's, you know, as needed? How does that work?
To give you an idea, how much water we use on a given day, in the wintertime, we use around 10 to 11 million gallons of water. That particular water tank, when constructed, it'll be 20 million gallons. So it'd be large enough to provide water for in-house water use for two days. So in a given, yeah, in a given year, it's not a terribly large amount. But we base all of our, the volume requirements are based on Utah State Rules for Water Quality, or for drinking water.
And you said when that's fully constructed, it'll be called 20 million gallons?
Twenty, or I'm sorry, 10 million. I'm sorry. Yeah, doubled. That would have been nice, but 10 is extraordinary though.
We've got 20 right now, and when we bring that one on, that.
Yeah, that is correct. Yeah, sorry for my misspeak there. So yeah, it's 10 million gallons. Roughly, we use around 10 to 11 million gallons a day in the wintertime, so indoor use. The highest amount of water we used on any given day in the history of Orem was in 2017 in July, and it was 61 million gallons of water. This last year, we only used around 40 to 45 million gallons on a given peak day. And so although our numbers, our population has increased, the per capita use has actually gone down a little bit. We feel that people are using water more wisely indoors and outdoors, and that we're making great strides in being better water stewards, I think, for that resource. To continue, I'd like to mention or cover one topic that you might have an interest in, and that is our Deer Creek Intake Project. We are a sponsor of that project. It is about a $98 million project. It's to replace the intake structure that is under about 100 feet of water. That is currently under construction today, and it will be completed in about a next year, next calendar year. Again, that is a significant project, not only for Orem, but for everyone that uses water that comes out of the reservoir at Deer Creek. Its service is about one and a half million people, potentially for drinking water or irrigation water or for other uses. The project, the Deer Creek Project, just so you know, the inception for that happened during the Great Recession. So grateful for those who had the forethought and foresight to look at that and to have the wisdom and courage to plan for that into the future. Likewise, here we are in 2023 with a significant project that we are facing right now. If that one structure fails, no water would come out of that reservoir, and there would be no Provo River. There would be no irrigation or drinking water. So therefore, everything that flows through that point is super critical for Orem and for this valley and for Salt Lake as well. So we are invested in that well into the future. We anticipate that our overall cost for that project will be on the order of $400,000. We are looking for ways to create some revenues to help pay for those and pay that back over time. That is probably our largest area of concern that we have before us, is looking how to fund those increases. As you also know, our water impact fee revenues have declined quite a bit over the last few years. And so that revenue source has been used to help pay for the Jordan L water, which is $1.2 million. And then this is coming online as well. So hopefully next year, we'll have more of a financial plan in place. We'll probably need to hire a financial consultant to meet with us as a board to review how to fund those projects. We work closely with city staff. We wear two hats as metropolitan board members and as a manager, and then as a public work director and the assistant public works director over water resources. But we work seamlessly and closely together with the board and with the Orem City staff on such projects as the Provo River Watershed Council, which helps to look over the watershed, the health of our watershed, any concerns and contaminants that may be occurring and regulations that are helpful to help ensure that we have minimal adverse impacts and pollution contamination that might occur in our water resource. We work together on water supply monitoring with the various canal companies. Our two springs that we have at the Alta Spring or Canyon Spring, and then other water resources available as well. We've adopted recently new policies and our fraud reporting, I just wanted to mention this, our fraud reporting score went up this last year. We continue to do very well on our audits with Squire and Company. They gave us a bill of clean health, and we have continued to receive that over the last several years and decades. We work together on working on several projects, including many well projects, water tank project. The Metropolitan Water District has given the city of Orem millions of dollars over the past 20 years to help develop wells and to replace a spring lines on the Alta Spring, and also significant donations for well number 10 and the 10 million gallon water tank, one and a half million dollars for both of those projects. So we have a very symbiotic and healthy relationship together where we both have the same goal, and that is to provide the greatest resource, water, to our citizens of Orem at the best value possible. So I'd like to turn some time over to Reed, who is also over our water resources, and he'd like to mention a few items that our water division has worked on this year.
So as a water division, there are some things that we're doing right now that are quite visible in the community. The city council recently took a tour of the 10 million gallon water tank that's being constructed on 400 South and 400 West. Associated with that project is a 950-foot deep well that we have drilled and will be putting, will be outfitting here in the next year or so as this project moves forward. There's also a booster pumping station that we will be constructing as well to boost, to deliver water into the central zone and maintain adequate pressure. And then there are a couple of large pipelines, 36-inch drain line and a 24-inch gravity feed line, which will eventually feed the spring water zone. Those are quite visible projects, capital projects that we've been doing. As a division, we like to do our job without anybody knowing as best we can. We know that we don't have calls coming in, and we're doing a good job. We have three different groups in the water division. We have the supply group. We have the distribution group, as well as the utility group. The water supply group is responsible for getting water to our pipes and making sure that it's clean, drinkable, and safe water. The different sources that we have include springs, surface water, and wells. Last year, we produced 8 billion gallons of drinking water is what the supply group provided. They also mitigated test pumping at 5,000 gallons per minute for the well that we drilled. We can pump 5,000 gallons per minute out of that well if we needed to. The plan is to just pump 4,000, but we ran it up as much as we could, just to see how productive it would be. The water supply group also received a perfect score on the sanitary survey, which is conducted by the state of Utah on our system, showing that we are following the rules and have created a safe water supply for our community. Of course, they perform regular maintenance at wells, water storage reservoirs, and spring areas. Our well number four was recently rehabbed with a new pump and motor and rehabilitated the column where all of the piping goes down into the well. I also tested 159, all of the city's backflow preventers at all of the properties that they have. As far as sampling goes, as we test our water, 1,364 total coliform tests were run, and all of them were clean. Inorganics and metals tests, we've conducted four of those tests, 11 nitrate tests, 12 pesticide tests, five VOC tests, and 16 DBP tests. All of those were well within range of acceptable health limits. The water distribution group, they maintain the pipes and get the water to the meters in front of residents and commercial industry throughout the city. Last year, they responded to 854 customer help tickets, 10,077 Blue Steak requests, 190 excavations where they had to dig into the pipes, 126 of those were leaks. They installed 160 feet of new fire line and eliminated water line and service where the new city hall building is being constructed, and also constructed a new temporary service to city hall. They were involved in the Hillcrest Park construction, where they added 1,058 feet of new water line there, along with new leak meters, backflow assemblies, hydrants, and conduit. They completed a main line and service replacement project at Key Ridge Circle, excavated all the water services on 200 East from 1400 South to 1600 South to verify their material type, and did the same thing on Main Street from 800 North to 1600 North and on 400 South from 400 East to 800 East. It's a busy group. They respond 24 hours a day when needed. The last group is the water utility group. So we've supplied the water, we're sending it to the customer, and we need to figure out how much the customer used, and that's the responsibility of the water utility group. That group, as you are aware, has been involved in a significant effort to replace all of the meters throughout the city and outfit them with a radio read technology that allows us to collect the amount of water that they have consumed on a regular basis, and then also to give them access to that. That project is nearing completion. Over the past year, they replaced 3,400 three-quarter and one-inch meters. They just have 800 left of the 24,000 that we've been installing. They've also replaced 80 meters of inch and a half and two-inch. We finally received the electronic device that communicates the usage to our system. We had 5,000 that we waited over a year and a half to receive. We finally got those in October, and we've installed 4,300 of those. We're nearing completion of that as well. We, of course, had to continue reading meters as well without that technology, meaning we had to go and lift most lids and to get the reads. It's been quite an effort. As a division, we've also completed a training backflow 101, off-highway vehicle, LTAP flagger course, traffic control technician, confined space, and PPE trenching and excavation safety and competent person training. Needless to say, there's a lot going on in the water division, and we have a great group of dedicated employees who enjoy coming to work and see the different challenges that we have and address them face-on. It's a great group to work with, and our community is in good hands with. With, with the group that we have and, and the, the planning that's, that's moving forward to plan and ensure that we have a good, clean water supply well into the future.
Thank you, Reed. Do we have any questions from the council about the water? Laney?
Chris, I wonder if you could, I know we had some phone calls month or two ago about the micro bubbles. Can you just kind of clarify, there was still some confusion, I know in my area. So maybe if you would just explain what happened with that.
Okay. Yeah. So in Northeast Orem, we've experienced a kind of phenomenon that's Laney has referred to as my councilman Millet has referred to as micro bubbles. And so it might look that your wa, might look like your water is not crystal clear. And it might even look a little milky and what that, they're exactly what you just described Laney, that is water bubbles, air bubbles that we have in that. We've experienced high flows, extraordinarily high flows from our Alta Springs and our Canyon Springs. Those springs feed the northeast part of the town quite directly. And as such, we've experienced such high flows that the velocities have also been extremely high and it's been extremely turbulent. And you would imagine that maybe it would work itself out before it came to the tap, but it actually didn't this year. And so we did receive calls on that. There are no taste concerns, no odor concerns. There's nothing wrong with the water itself. It is simply the fact that we've experienced extraordinarily high volume of water in the northeast part of town through our springs. And that's what that is related to. It's very fortunate. So sometimes my daughter will look at it and say, well, why is it like that? She'll think, I'm going to get some Evian or something. I'm like, no, forget it. Don't buy that. This water is great. This is what you want to drink and there's nothing wrong at all. So we did experience that this year. It's a good challenge, good problem to have. I don't know the solution to get rid of them, but it's, it's good to have.
And I just wanted to say just, you know, thank you to your group because I know there were people I saw on Facebook, social media that expressed some of those concerns. And even though it was just exactly as you described, our, our public works staff still went out and flushed the line and I don't know if you want to explain that, just to kind of put the resident cities.
Yeah. Whenever there's a consumer, a concern, when they call us, contact us, we will go out and mute them that day. No matter what it is, if they smell something, what, it could be chlorine or it could be, it's something looks rusty. It could be something from their internal plumbing, from a water heater, or it could be perhaps some failure that is occurring. I did that with a neighbor recently down the street from you, in fact. Where their water softener was failing and they had these little, these little, these little, almost like pellets that you would see in a water softener and it would, it would plug their line and reduce their flow. So we determined that their water softener had failed. They replaced that, flushed their lines, works perfectly fine now. Now those are duties that normally you wouldn't, we wouldn't normally take care of because we're not plumbers, indoor plumbing specialists. But we can identify certain concerns and refer them to professionals that can work with them on their side of the meter. So we, we respond to anybody, any day.
Well, and I, I guess that's my point really. Thank you. Thank you for the service which you provide. I think we just live in a unique city where we have wonderful staff, wonderful employees that really care. And I, I appreciate all that you do, if you can pass that message along.
Thank you so much. We believe we have great professionals, but even greater human beings, quite frankly. They will go out and look at anything. If they don't know the problem, they'll figure it out. They don't know the answer, we'll figure it out. So.
Mayor and council, you've heard me say how impressed I've always been over my almost 10 years here of the level of sophistication of, of our public works leadership. And you know, of course, Chris is, is at the head of that, but to go along with the, the big mind is the big heart. So I think that's been encapsulated really, really well here. In, in both the comments by, by you council member Millet, but also in the report given by Chris and Reed today.
Thank you. Terry, you had a comment?
I, I do. I got to see our water department firsthand. I had it. My neighbor thought that, that she was having some problems and settling in, in her property. And city came out and found that actually it wasn't that neighbor. It was another, there was a leak in a line a couple of doors away that they found. And they were amazing. They were there. I believe, I was out of town actually that night, but I believe they were there till 10 or 11 o'clock at night. And, and they mentioned to us, I think one of the guys probably had worked in another city said, you know, other cities would tell someone to turn off your water, we'll come back tomorrow. And these guys didn't do that. They stayed there pretty late through the night. And then there was, you know, I guess there's jobs that go really slick and there's other jobs that doesn't always go as slick as you're digging in rocks. And this was one of those that wasn't as slick as some of the others. And the guy just said, some of, you know, if there's things that can go wrong, it's kind of going wrong in this job, but that, but they were amazing. And there's a big staff there, you know, a lot of guys doing it. So I really appreciate that. And this, and I'm just proud to be part of the city. Now I want, I want, I want to make a comment and I want to see your response. When I go to Costco and I see people buying caseloads of purified water. And I won't tell you what I tell my wife that means when it says purified water. But anyway, I have my own opinion about that, but is that better than the water when I turn on my tap at home and drink? Is it better the Costco waters as purified, which I have no idea what that, well, like I said, I won't say it publicly, but talk to me about the quality of our water versus, versus Costco's purified water.
Yeah, our, our water would.
And not, and not, and not Costco specifically, just.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Sorry Costco. I actually own stock in Costco, excuse me, but, but any bottled water.
Yeah, I, I like to think that they're just buying it for convenience because oh, I need to have this to have on hand. But I believe that our water easily competes, if not exceeds the water quality of, of bottled water. Other people may have different reasons for drinking it, but they should feel confident and safe in drinking the water here in Orem.
So I'd like to add to that too, that we have at least one kidney analysis company that does. They, they, they are concerned about water quality. And so we would meet with them and we show them our, our, what, what our water constitute, is constituted. And they're, they're very impressed with that. They use our water for their processes on their sites there too. So we take great pride in that. We, we live in a very fortunate location, quite frankly. There are natural minerals, of course, in any locations. Wherever you pump water out of the ground or wherever it flows over rocks, through the mountains and the streams and so forth. And there are some, some minerals there and other constituents of the water supply that are better than others. And so we have a water quality report that we produce every year annually required by the state. And the US EPA to do that. That is on our website at Orem.org, Orem.gov. And, and you can look at all of, all of the constituents found in our water supply. And before, before we conclude, if I might just conclude by saying, we'd like to extend an appreciation to Mr. Ladell Gilman for his service over the last 12 years. He's, he's, he felt like he's ready to graduate. And so we would like to honor that tonight and, but recognize him for his dedication and service. He's, I'd say extremely meticulous when it comes to reading minutes and reading reports and bringing things to our attention. And for that, I say, thank you Ladell Gilman for doing that. We appreciate your service. You will be missed. Thank you very much Ladell for your service. Thank you. Did you have a comment?
I just have one other comment, which is whether this is appropriate or not, it doesn't, that's never stopped me in the past, but I, I give a shout out to Crystal Millstein, who is running currently one of the candidates running. Cause she comes to these meetings, she'll be one of the candidates that understands our, or Orem's current water situation or anything else we talk about. So I think that's significant that we've got someone running for office that's actually sits through all these meetings. So. Anyway, sorry, if that's not appropriate mayor, forgive me. Okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Chris? Was that complete?
Here. Working on the Metropolitan Water Board for, for 12 years. They actually asked me, do you want another term? Since I'm in my 94th year, I figured that'd make me in my 100th year when I completed my snake six tier term. So I said, I think we better change that and appoint somebody else. But it's been a great pleasure to work with the people that I'm working, worked with on the Metropolitan Water Board. I love hearing the water report at every meeting. I love working with the people. And I'd also like to give recognition to Stella Welch. I've known her for, she and I were the same, are the same age. Stella has been a, may contributed to the Orem city, probably more than many people have. I'll let you know that during her administration, that she appointed me to the planning commission. The Blue Ribbon Commission. I served on the Board of Appeals and the Board of Adjustment under her direction and the Streets and Roads. So this is my first experience in giving service to my community. But it's all been a growing and a pleasant experience. And I'd like to thank the board for their association.
Thank you. Okay. And then thank you Reed and Chris for that presentation. And we appreciate all that you do on the water side. That is something that we hear regularly from citizens about concerns and, and Orem's in fabulous shape on water. So we appreciate it. Okay. Next we've got item 6.3, emergency preparedness and city drill report. And Heath Stevenson will present this.
Okay. Let's start over. All right. Mayor, council, thank you for a few minutes tonight. My name is Heath Stevenson. I'm Orem City's emergency manager. And I work under Chief Sanderson out of the fire department. Just wanted to go over a few things tonight, some of our successes that we've had in emergency management. And then our last Orem city drill that we participated in was one of the best ones, if not the best one that we've had since I've been here. So I'm going to finish off talking about that a little bit. Please feel free anytime, ask any questions you need. I won't get offended if you cut me off, I promise. The first thing that we did, so our comprehensive emergency management plan, anytime that we have a change in mayor or city manager, so we continue to get our emergency preparedness grant. We have to have that updated, adopted and promulgated. So that's something that we did today, or this year, excuse me. And we've also started doing our neighborhood preparedness courses. We do this each month. And we've had really good turnouts from our residents. So we've, we've done five of them now and we've had anywhere from 15 up to 40 people. So our last one that we did this month was winter weather and we had about 15 people that turned out for that one. So I want to thank council member Spencer. He was, he came out and supported and came to that presentation. So another thing that we're doing, that we, we do four classes each year for ham radio. So our ham radio users help with our city drill and they would, they're going to help with our communications if we were to have a big citywide emergency. So we have a few instructors that we'll bring in and we try to go through as many of those classes, get as many people to both get their licenses and upgrade their licenses. It's like I said, we had, we had four classes this year and we had about 50 people who were able to obtain those ham radio licenses. That would help us out in any disaster situation. This year with our Orem Fest, so we have to do a mass gathering permit every year through the Utah County Health Department. This year the health department showed up at Orem Fest to do an inspection. We were able to pass that inspection with no issues. So that was only the second time in the seven years that I've been here that they actually came to do that inspection. We also this year saw the weather pattern that was going to be there for Orem Fest and were able to work with the National Weather Service. The contact up there and we were getting real time weather reports. So I don't know if you remember on Friday, we actually working with Karina and Bren, we're able to, we had to shut down Orem Fest, pull people off the rides for about 30 minutes due to lightning in the area. So it was kind of cool to see how that process all worked. From the National Weather Service through myself, through Bren to make that call and then had everything back up and running. So the other significant thing we did, we moved our Everbridge system, which is our mass notification system here in the county. We used to be on our own little island within Orem. And when our dispatch moved from Orem dispatch to Metro dispatch, we were going to have issues in our Metro dispatch, being able to contact both Provo and Orem residents out of the Metro Provo location. So we merged our system into the Utah County system. Nothing on our end changed with our residents or our employees, how we were using the system. But it was much more efficient for our Metro dispatch to be able to reach out to our residents during any test during our city drill or during any emergency that we might have. We also signed into a new five year contract this year. So we were able to actually save some money switching into the county system versus being on our own island, which is always good. On the fire department side of things, we do our emergency management assistant compacts or our EMACs that we'll do. We have fire department personnel who are trained to go help different areas, whether it's states, California, New Mexico, Alaska, we kind of, wherever they may need help. But we have to keep track of all of that information to be able to get called in, be able to go help. And so we transferred from NMASS, which was the natural, nationwide mutual aid system to our web VOC for the state. So Chief Hurst and myself were able to switch that over so that we can stay up to date and continue to go on those EMACs and get that training for our, for our first responders. Just some of our emergency management partners, we'll go through, we did multiple drills with our public safety. We worked with Utah County on a three day exercise. We worked with our state DEM partners and we've also done a couple mass casualty exercises with Tempanogas Hospital throughout the year, just to get that training, make sure we're all on the same page. So if anything were to happen, then we'd be able to run efficiently and, and be ready to go for those. And then the last thing that I want to mention tonight, this is our Orem city drill. So our Orem city drill, we do annually. And this year, I'm going to quote this graph, this year we had approximately 45,000 people who were accounted for in that drill. So accounted for means we have block captains, neighborhood leaders and area leaders set up throughout the city. And those neighborhood area leaders or block captains, go check on neighbors, get account of how many people are in the area. So accounted for means they either came out and participated the night of the drill. Or that block captain knew the family was going to be out of town or out of the city. And they let that block captain know. So as you can see with our numbers here, we're just starting 2020, we, with COVID, we didn't hold the drill. The first year back was a little rough, but as you can see, we're, we're continually climbing and having more and more residents that participate in that drill. So I think that's a big push in our emergency management department is just trying to bring in as many residents as possible. I also want to thank Pete. He helped a ton with the advertising of this drill, pushing it out through all his different magical avenues that he's got over there. Don't even know what they are, but fulfilling that helped with that 11,000 person increase. So that's all I have tonight. Just wanted to, wanted to talk about some of those successes that we've had in emergency management. So are there any questions from Mayor, Council or Bren?
Mayor, Council, if I can just emphasize, I mean, to have the amount of
Mayor Council, if I could just emphasize, I mean, to have the amount of communication related to emergency preparedness in the amount of forty-five thousand of our residents, like, I think that really is a big deal. It's easy to put emergency preparedness sort of on the back burner. So the fact that we've gotten that kind of involvement, it's of course, and no small part to Pete Wolfley, our PIO and Communications Manager, but also to Heath and our, and our Fire Department for their efforts to get out into the community and, and interact with our residents and making sure we're getting this two-way communication going.
No, I agree, it's pretty phenomenal. It's kind of incredible really to get forty-five percent of the city involved in something like that, that's just a one-off exercise. That's amazing.
Do you have a question? I know part of our new city hall is going to have an emergency command center area. I'm assuming you're going to plan for how that would evolve, how that would, what that would look like in an emergency?
Yeah, yes, definitely. So it'll be nice, we'll move this, the whole drill that we've been working on will now work, operate out of that building when it's done, rather than having to share with police in our area that we have now. But yes, for any, we'll, we'll do trainings, we have an EOC, Emergency Operations Center Plan that's created currently. So when the new building's set up, we will switch over to be able to use that building, be able to better, have it set up better as an emergency operations center than what we have now in the training, training center here at the, the current Public Safety Building. So there will be, you have more trainings in there, more readily accessible and newer technology, which, which is always beneficial in an emergency operations center.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, Heath, thanks for that update.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Next up, we've got personal appearances. And we've got four people here on the list that would like to have a public comment. So we'll open up this, this personal appearance list. First on the list, we've got Jordan Macedon.
Mayor, City Council Members, thank you for your time. My name is Jordan Macedony and I would like to address an issue that has increasingly become a problem lately. Six hundred West between eight hundred North and four hundred North has started to become a main artery with cars reaching speeds past twenty-five miles per hour. In the past, I have made multiple calls to our police dispatch to get the street patrolled more often. But unfortunately, the response is our police department is spread thin. I have also talked with a city engineer who suggested that we start a petition. My family has gone to the majority of our neighbors on six hundred West and they all agree, the majority agree that something needs to be done about the speed on this road. I have three pages of signatures with, with me showing support from the community around us. My personal suggestion would be to have six to eight speed bumps put in as well as lowering the speed limit along this half-mile road. Additionally, stop signs could be the solution as well, but unfortunately, the existing ones are not obeyed as it is. Additionally, there are many of us who enjoy the parks located near the Orem Community Hospital, but the crosswalk for Geneva Elementary was removed. We are asking for a new crosswalk to be put in at the end of six hundred West and four hundred North. We're asking the City Council to help us move forward with these improvements to help our neighborhood safe and livable. I'm not sure, do I do anything with this?
You could give those to, it would be Pete.
Can I ask something? So I think I had a resident reach out to me about that. Are you, are you having issues with dispatch at all or the?
No, not necessarily. They're, just their response is that, you know, the police department is spread thin and they can't really get out to patrol it every day after school. Like during, everybody's going to work or getting off work, so they just can't be there all the time.
Okay.
So not, not necessarily a problem with dispatch, but it's understandable that they are spread thin, especially during busy times.
But, but you would like a police car parked there at certain, possibly to deter?
Obviously, it's not the solution, you know, we gotta do something on our own here to control the speed ourselves, the police department can't do it.
Right, okay, thank you.
Bren?
Yeah, just a quick reminder, we have a kind of a relatively new multidisciplinary team that looks at all of our traffic and traffic operations issues. And so I've made note here in terms of look, relooking at the crosswalk at six hundred West and four hundred North and we'll have our, this team look at it and see what we might be able to do there.
Are they, and just to educate the public on the process, so you've got a petition there with how many people?
I think it's about forty.
About forty?
Yeah, along six hundred West.
And your specific ask from those people was?
It says right at the top here, so we asked for some sort of speed control and we left that up to the city. And along with that crosswalk. So we explained to them, we're doing a petition, City Council, whether that be stop signs or speed bumps or something.
Okay.
The posted speed limit is twenty-five, but people are just flooring it, I can hear it inside my house.
Yeah, so, so maybe there's some automated solution or something, I don't know what the solution is, but that would be something to look at with your multidisciplinary group.
Mayor Chris Sherkey, our Public Works Director, kind of helps lead that team and he can maybe give an initial response to this item.
Okay, yeah, so we, we have a traffic tiger team, it's really good, good team. And we're going to look at that issue. It involves our Police Department, our Public Works Department as in traffic operations, which is in Public Works, as well as in engineering with Sam, I think you talked to Sam. We have your information on our spreadsheet that we reviewed today. And, but we're glad you have that. What you have there is what's in accordance with our transportation master plan. The first appendix refers to a traffic calming. In the process for that, what you've accomplished is the first step. And now that'll lead us into a further, greater detail of data collection for volumes as well as speeds and looking at potential solutions for your neighborhood together. So we look forward to working with you closely on solutions.
And what would be his contact going forward to kind of follow this through?
I'll give you my information if you'd like, out here, you have Sam's information as well, we're the two points on that committee.
All right. So Mayor, you, you've mentioned to me recently how, how you feel like we've been improving kind of our responsiveness, for example, in, in these council meetings. And I just want to say that Chris Sherkey, our Public Works Director, has been a huge part of that increased responsiveness. So again, with his big mind, he brings that big heart and we'll, we'll make sure this doesn't fall through the cracks.
That's, that's great. And that is our goal, is, is, is there are different problems like this, you know, how can we address them? They don't just get brushed off. And we can't fix everything, but we can take it through a process to see if there's a solution. So, thank you. Next up, we've got Ann Kendall.
Three things, the lights in the park are beautiful. A crosswalk at Fourth East and two hundred North would be good to look at because when you closed, when Sharon closed, the kids on that side, west side of Fourth East have to cross to get the cascade. It's a nightmare for those kids. What I'm here to talk about is irrigation water. And I just had a very good conversation with Chris, got most of my answers, but I'll just state the problem. There are about a hundred of us that own water, get our water off of the Provo Bench Canal, the big fourteen-foot canal that runs through Orem. And we've been told that when Linden takes their water out of the ditch, there won't be enough in the ditch to maintain it for our use. So we will own our water, won't be able to use our water. And Chris indicates, yes, it's a problem. My thought was, can we lease our water to Orem? He says, no, Orem doesn't need it. We can lease it to some other city, maybe, and kind of goes away. But, or we can look at other ways of watering garden and orchards and stuff. But I would look to council to think about something for these hundred or so users who are going to lose use of their water. And I don't know what we can do, but it'd be very expensive to water our garden and our orchard with the city water tiered level. And we have some ideas, but that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and Chris would be the best one to follow through on that, but thank you. Next, we've got Blyden Lowensack.
Hello. So I'm here to make my voice heard publicly once again. No, I'm not a new face. Please take note that I will continue to be relentless with my support of our mayor. Terry, while you're still here, Dave and Laney, in their efforts to represent what the majority of the citizens of Orem want, as was reflected in our last election. I, I recently received this flyer in the mail, supporting Chris Kilpak, Jen Gill and Councilman Jeff Lamson with the same message, seventy-two percent of Orem voters said no to Prop Two, which was propagated by the group Stronger Together, PIC, even though the Utah Lieutenant Governor, Deidre Henderson's office, recommended to them to cease and desist as an organization along with their message. So what's interesting is, is that these three candidates, in order to get around the recommendation of the cease and desist, aligned themselves with the new, newly formed organization, Stronger Orem PAC, but with the same message, they were told to stop. Very clever, very divisive, but in my opinion, lacking in integrity, transparency and honesty. And by the way, a very large part of those Orem voters who voted no for Prop Two have woken up. I've spoken to many, with the realization of number one, the closure of several of their Orem schools, they're now realizing. Number two, the twenty percent increase to our property taxes, seventy-three percent of which has, has been allocated and has gone to the Alpine School District. And what's interesting is that zero percent of, of that money of which is coming to Orem to fix our schools, same old problem. Do you realize that a yes vote, I, I, people are beginning to realize this now, do you realize a yes vote for Prop Two would have resulted in a hundred percent of our allocated tax dollars coming to Orem schools? Let me tell you, for those who woke it up and are waking up, a vote for Prop Two today would result in a resounding yes. Chris and Jen and Councilman Jeff Lamson say there's no more hidden agendas, really. And let me quickly get this in, the National Association of Relators and Utah Central Association of Relators have heavily donated the campaigns of these two candidates. Why? Because they're hoping that these candidates win so that it will affect the eventual balance of our city council here. Let me tell you, Chris.
Say Blyden, that's three men.
Chris, Jen and Jeff, if elected, I promise, they'll be the same buyer's remorse. And just one more thing, if, make no mistake in believing that we're done fighting for a new Orem School District, because we're not done. Thanks.
John Barrett?
Hi, thank you, Mayor, City Council and our City Manager. I have one comment and two questions. The, the, the comment is, is I previously worked for the US Congress where a professional dress code was required. And I've noticed that over time, Orem's dress code has kind of gone downhill. And I was, just wanted to make a comment that we may want to consider an act, make an act to increase, to institute a dress code before we have a John Fetterman-type problem in Orem. So, Mal, my two questions. On November ninth, twenty twenty-two, a year ago, there was a city council member that had a full quorum, the entire city council was here. And there was some, there was two legislative votes scheduled for that evening. Shortly before those votes, one of the city council individual members left. And that's fine, sometimes you might have a family emergency, some kind of event scheduled. However, last week, it was, a video was circulated online that showed that one of our city council members, Tom McDonald, was speaking at a political issue rally, political issue committee rally that same evening. So he left his legislative duties, voting for the city of Orem to attend a political issue rally. And in that rally, the city councilman encouraged them to vote for whoever C.C. Rasmussen tells them to vote for. I think that means that an Orem City Council member told a PIC primary officer to advocate for municipal candidates, which is against Utah state law. Now, we know that that same PIC did follow his advice and went out and advocated for municipal candidates, which is against the law. So I guess now we know why our city councilman left his official duties that evening to party with a PIC, I guess. So anyway, my question is, is that ethical for an Orem City Council person to leave a legislative session when there were two votes to be held, to attend a rally encouraging them to break the law? The second, the second question I have is the financial disclosures. I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for the new financial disclosures rule that was put into place several months ago. And I'd thank each of you for filing a revised disclosure. Now, in the twenty twenty-one election, there was a Woodbury Sign Agreement that made the Deseret News, Salt Lake Tribune, Provo Daily Herald. And in there, there were some accusations, well, not accusations, several candidates signed an agreement that they would pledge for signage to, you know, to help this developer. And it was controversial. Now, one of the city council candidates, you know, kind of bragged about getting some, some, some campaign signs or some signage on I-15. And we never saw a disclosure related to that. And that candidate filed a report on December second, twenty twenty-one, that did not show that. His new disclosure shows a contribution from University Place. I believe it should have actually been Woodbury Corporation and I'd like to have some evidence shown related to that disclosure. Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's everyone that's on the personal appearance list. All right, next up, we've got item number eight, consent items. There's three items on the consent, or there's four items on the consent agenda. We've got approval of meeting minutes for October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. We've got an appointment to the Metropolitan Water District of Orem Board that we heard from earlier. Those appointments are Casey Shaw, Alex Lot and Chris Sherkey. We've got item eight point three, an appointment, Beautification Advisory Commission, that's Britten Renaltson and Robert McFadden. And finally, item eight point four, we've got an appointment to the Orem Fest Advisory Commission of Katrina Blil. Would somebody like to make a motion on that, on those consent items?
I can, do I just need to say, I move that we approve the consent items eight point one, eight point two, eight point three and eight point four for our approval?
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
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 Thank you, the consent items passed. Next, we've got item nine, scheduled items. First item on the scheduled items is item nine point one, resolution, a notice of intent to consider the boundary adjustments resolution between the city of Orem and Provo City located near the intersection of ten thirty east and sixteen thirty south, Orem address. Approximately seven hundred north and fifteen fifty east, Orem address, and approximately two thousand south and Columbia Lane, Orem address. Gary, again, our, one of our city attorneys would like to present that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. What you have in front of you is actually three resolutions to adjust the boundary of our corporate limits between Orem and Provo. And the first one, as the mayor. And the first one, as the mayor said, is at ten thirty east, sixteen thirty south. That's just off Carterville Road, and it's suggesting the boundary among some parcels that over the years, there's been confusion, and it's not really transferring any property. The county has already appropriately taxed things. It's just cleaning up really a housekeeping detail. The next one is seven hundred north, fifteen fifty east. That's the Canyon River District. About a year ago, the council passed an ordinance amending the zoning code to allow a project to go forward that would include a townhome project. The developer is requesting that the townhome project be removed from Orem and put into Provo boundaries. In response to our study meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago and as we introduced this item to you, the city attorney and I have been able to meet with the Provo City Attorney and also the attorney for the developer. And we've discussed the phasing. There were three items that the council was concerned about. One was the bridge improvements. One was the timing on the commercial to the north of the townhomes. There's two phases in there. When would they be completed? And the next was a public utility easement on the bridge. And we've, the city attorney sent out to you a draft development agreement that we think covers these areas. And then the last resolution in adjusting the boundary would be at two thousand south in Columbia Lane. There's a sliver of property and a detention basin there that should come from Provo into Orem. And Orem uses that, and it deals with our stormwater. Now, by passing the resolutions in front of you tonight does not make an adjustment to the boundaries. It just begins the process set out in state law where the boundaries might be adjusted between our cities. And so if you pass the resolutions tonight, the three of them, it begins a sixty-day process where we will go through a noticing to the community. We can get comments back about whether this should be done. And then the council will hold a public hearing. And after that public hearing, if the council determines that it furthers the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Orem, then you could change and adjust the boundaries. And at that time, the draft development agreement that we have could turn into a final format. We would sign it, have the developer sign it before that meeting. And so at this point, I would ask that you pass these resolutions, all three of them, and then take a look at the development agreement and see if we've captured the council's concerns and have them accurately reflected in the development agreement. And you can get back with the city attorney or me, and we can continue those negotiations if we've missed something or there's a problem. Can I answer any questions?
Lanay?
So, in anticipation or preparation for this public meeting, I think it would be appropriate for us to list the pros and cons for our citizens to better understand this issue. I'd like to really see if we can direct that to, you know, issues regarding revenue, the pros and cons, issues regarding this particular development. And also, as you're referring to the meeting where we initially heard about this, I think it was the one John Barrett was referring to tonight, but the first time we heard about this was at that meeting. So where we actually talked about really the impact of these townhomes on specifically our first responders and the pros and cons of that by annexing this property. So those are a few of the things that I would like to have clarified for the public so we can show the pros and cons. This is something, like you say, we've been working on for a year, maybe almost a year, quite some time. So we want to get this right. Let's make sure that we have our public informed as best we can. That would be my request.
Yes, we can do that.
Anyone else? Okay, yeah, we have been talking about this for a long time, and so I think we're pretty up to speed. I think the pro and con issue would be great to outline as the next step. But as far as where we're at right now, I think, is anyone ready to make a log of this?
Okay, so, tell me if I get this right, Gary. I knew that we how do I say this? We, a notice of intent to consider a resolution by the Orem City Council indicating its intent to adjust a common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City to place approximately three point one eight acres of property located at approximately seven hundred north, fifteen fifty east, Orem address, entirely within Provo City. Second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And aye.
Okay, the resolution passes. Let's move on to, there's three here, so let's go ahead and do the second.
A motion for a resolution by the Orem City Council indicating its intent to adjust a common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City to place approximately seventy-seven thousand four hundred and ten square feet of property located at approximately two thousand south in Columbia Lane, Orem address, entirely within the city of Orem. Second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Second resolution passes.
Okay, here we go. And we'd like to move that a resolution by the Orem City Council indicating its intent to agree on a common boundary between the city of Orem and Provo City located near the intersection of ten thirty east and sixteen thirty south, Orem address. Second.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The third resolution, we're talking about passes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get to work on those pros and cons.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor. On our consent items, we had an appointment for Beautification Advisory Commission to Britton and Renalson, and he arrived this evening. Britton, you want to stand up? So he's on the beautification, so we appreciate his service and his willingness to serve the citizens of Orem. Thanks, Britton.
Thank you, Britton. Okay, item nine point two, an ordinance, park lighting enclosure ordinance. Jake Summers, our city attorneys, would you like to present that?
Mayor, council members, thank you for the time this evening. As I get the slideshow up.
We should, the good guys don't come to city council meeting. I mean, the good guys from the community here. So we just hear this trash as though it's a common voice.
Tom, did you want to make a statement?
Oh, did I? I didn't have my hand up, did I?
While you were just talking, you were on the mic.
Oh, I hit mute, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So Mayor, council members, this item was presented at, I believe, our last work session. This is ultimately an amendment to Orem City Code thirteen one eleven, which establishes park hours. And this is being done as a request from the Recreation Department as they are attempting to attract recreational opportunities, tournaments that are national and regional. The idea is that we would allow parks to remain open for these type of tournaments given weather conditions, but only if there's been a prior approval and permitting. And that is the changes that we would be doing. As you can see, the current language does not provide for any sort of exception currently, except for Orem Fest. And what we are proposing is that the Recreation Department Director, through a permitting process, would have the discretion to modify the hours of following parks. In our work session, we had included Windsor Park, given some concerns about the programming that would be done at Windsor Park and the area where it is located within the neighborhood. Just really, the Recreation Department ultimately decided that it wasn't necessarily a park that would be utilized, and as such, it wouldn't be necessary to have that on the permitting process. So we would be looking specifically at the City Center Park, the Community Park, Hillcrest Park, and Lakeside Park. It would be required that to obtain this permit, that they submit an application. Our ordinance that we have outlined here would provide grounds for the denial of a permit application if it would unreasonably interfere with any other permitted use of that park, any city-approved event, or if the proposed use would disturb the peace or cause undue hardship on the neighboring residents or businesses. So there's still that leeway for the department director to make a decision and say, you know, while we have this permit process, the proposed use is going to create an unreasonable hardship to the neighboring properties, and so therefore, we're going to deny permit. So it gives that discretion to our Recreation Director. The ordinance provides very specific conditions for the permitted use, and that it also requires city staff to be on site during any sort of use that is beyond the normal operating hours. That would provide the Recreation Department eyes on and make sure that the the permit, the permittee is using the park under those conditions of the permit. And that if any sort of conditions occur that would violate the use, then city staff can revoke the permit and require the permittee to cease operations and vacate the park. So ultimately, that is the proposed ordinance as it is. In the packet, it is outlined in Exhibit A in the redlining. If there are any specific concerns, questions that I may answer.
Do we have any questions?
Just, do we have a, I understand if it goes past eleven midnight, like, what if it keeps going one o'clock? Is there kind of a absolute nothing after that time?
There is not, nothing in the ordinance specifically gives a drop dead date. But again, the idea here is that the department director would be using this as a way to address any sort of weather-related concerns and then having staff on site. So if we get into the wee hours of the morning, if it's getting to midnight, and this is starting to present that undue hardship that the department director is going to call cease of operations.
Okay, thank you.
So this is primarily weather-related incidents would push the time, right? That's the goal?
Yes, the goal is to address those tournaments that may have a weather-related incident and teams that have traveled from out of state or out of county.
Okay. Terry?
So I've been at Windsor Park with weather-related softball games with my grandkids. But I've noticed that one game that I was hustling to get to, and I was like, because of city council meetings, anyway. But when I got there, because of weather-related, they canceled the game. So I think a lot of times the coaches will do that, too. If the game, if it was weather-related, delayed, and now all of a sudden, it's nine thirty or ten, and the game hasn't even started, they're going to cancel the game. So I think, I support this. The only thing, my only question, and this is a new park that we don't know about yet, is the Hillcrest Park with the pickleball courts. I would love to see that be a twenty-four-hour-a-day park. Not, because the pickleball courts are right along University Parkway, and there is no homes behind it or to either side, and that would be really nice. Some folks are just getting warmed up about midnight. You know, if you could go play pickleball from midnight to one o'clock in the morning. And I think as far as a safety issue with the park, it's probably safer to have lights on than it is to have a park where it's all dark. So I just want, I'd like the city to consider that. That might be something that we might say, you know, for those night owls, there's a place you could go at two in the morning and play pickleball.
You know, Councilmember Peterson, I think that's an excellent point and something that Bryce Merrill and I have discussed. But at this point, the purposes of this ordinance amendment was really to address the tournaments and really to try to take it one bite at a time. But definitely, I think this would be something that, you know, Bryce Merrill and I would look to revisit with the Hillcrest Park.
And this won't even be an issue till the spring. I mean, the courts won't be done till the spring, but just in the future, I'd love to have us be open to working with people that would love that, you know, that's just a place we could, they could come.
I think that one of the biggest things pushing this ordinance was just, as we become more of a tournament destination, it would be an impediment to tournaments to book if they knew they were going to be shut down with adverse weather. So I think we're trying to fix that, so.
That is the intent, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Someone might like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, the city council by ordinance, accept the park lighting enclosure ordinance.
I'll second that.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The resolution, or the ordinance passes. Thank you. Next up, Jake, you're on again. We have item nine point three, a resolution, the recertification of the Orem Municipal Justice Court.
So again, Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to present this on behalf of the Orem City Justice Court as well as Orem City. This resolution that's before the court is pretty short, but the supporting material is quite lengthy. So I wanted to take just a few minutes to break down the information that's been provided in the supporting documentation. The Orem City Municipal Justice Court was established and began operation in September of 2010. The Orem City Justice Court handles all Class B, Class C misdemeanors for individuals who are eighteen years of age or older and whose violations occurred within the geographic boundaries of Orem City. So that runs the gambit of DUIs, drug-related crimes, retail theft. It also includes infractions, so traffic infractions, speeding tickets, red light tickets, et cetera. It also has jurisdiction specifically for sixteen and seventeen-year-olds as it relates to traffic offenses. And so if somebody, one of your children or sixteen, seventeen-year-old gets a speeding ticket, their destination for to handle that ticket would be our Orem City Justice Court as opposed to a district court where they're going to be thrown in with a myriad of other offenses. Kind of give you an overview again, who's who. The Orem City Municipal Justice Court Judge is Judge Reed Parkin. He's been the judge, he was appointed in 2010. The Orem City Municipal Justice Court Administrator is Jody Thano. She has been also with the city since 2010. And together, they manage a team of roughly six judicial assistants. There is a quarter-time judicial assistant, and judicial assistant is a clerk. So they handle everything from payments of fines at the front counter as well as taking minutes and hearing cases in the courtroom itself. Orem City contracts for indigent defense work through the law offices of Stevens and Gailey. They employ five attorneys, and two are dedicated full-time to handling cases for indigent defendants within the city. And then prosecution is handled by two attorneys within the Orem City Attorney's Office and supervised by the deputy city attorney. In 2022, for the fiscal year, I've provided kind of a layout of the stats of what kind of cases, how many cases the Orem City Justice Court is handling. As you can see, it is a pretty busy justice court. Some interesting information is, you know, we've handled in the last fiscal- Some interesting information is, you know, we've handled in the last fiscal calendar, 186 DUI related crimes in a warm city. All other misdemeanors, just over 1,000 misdemeanors have been filed in the justice court. We work diligently to to resolve those cases, make sure that justice is done speedy. Most people, when they think of the criminal justice system, think the wills of justice grind very slowly. And sometimes that is the case. And frankly, when COVID happened and the court shut down statewide. It presented quite a problem for the attorney's office, the justice court. And we've worked pretty diligently over the last couple of years to bring ourselves back above water instead of being drowning in the cases. Were lagging during that COVID period. And then, as you can see, just over 7,000 citations were issued by Orem City Police Department. And referred to the justice court and of those about 1,300 actually went to court, met with an attorney. One of our prosecutors to resolve their case, negotiate the case or go to trial. So as you can see, a pretty busy justice court itself.
So Jake, can you just go back to that slide?
Absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, I'm just curious how the math works on this. So what does it mean? So number of cases filed, this is DUIs, 186. Number of cases disposed, 137. 74% clearance rate. What does it mean cases disposed and clearance rate?
So the cases disposed are please, our cases where pleas have been entered and they've been sentenced. Cases have gone to trial, they've been sentenced. Cases where somebody's gone to trial and been acquitted or cases have been dismissed based on evidentiary reasons. So the case has been disposed or closed. The clearance rate is of the percentage filed versus how many have been closed. And that would be your clearance rate of 74%. Now, in some instances, we have clearance rates that are well over 100% and that's because we've had cases that. Have been filed in previous years that we're still closing out.
Okay, thank you.
In 2010, again, the justice court began operations. We were required in 2011. To recertify on our one year anniversary. And then recertify every four years subsequently. So 2015, 2018, 2019, and now. Our period of recertification has come up. In 2023, our deadline to apply for recertification is in December of this year as our certificate, our cert. Certification expires January 31 of 2024. So what is required for us to recertify the municipal justice court? Is we have to submit an application packet. Included in that packet is an affidavit completed by Judge Parkin. Which goes through each item that is required and Judge Parkin has to affirm that yes, we are in compliance. There has to be an opinion letter from the city attorney. That should have been provided in your supplemental material. We prepared that that letter outlining all of the requirements for the operation and feasibility of the justice court. And I believe Mr. Steve Earl, our city attorney, has signed that letter. And then a resolution adopted by the city council requesting recertification. And that is what we're here for tonight. The operation of the justice court is regulated by both state statutes as well as judicial code rules. Those can generally be found in 78A7103 and subsequent sections of that section. And then the judicial code rules are found in Appendix B of the Judicial Council Code of Judicial Administration. Those requirements were outlined in Mr. Earl's letter. Ultimately, Mr. Earl has obtained that it is feasible for Orem to continue operating a municipal justice court. And Judge Parkin has provided the affidavit to our office, which affirms all of the requirements have been met. And the justice court is operating in compliance with state statute and judicial rule. The content of the resolution tonight requests that the Justice Court Standards Committee. And the Utah Judicial Council recertify the Orem Municipal Justice Court. That reaffirms the city's willingness to continue to meet the minimum requirements. For the continued operation of the Orem Municipal Justice Court for another four year term. And then authorizes city staff to complete any other necessary actions to complete the recertification process. And so that is what ultimately is outlined in the resolution before you tonight.
Any questions?
Yeah, Jake, do we have any? Any complaints against the municipal justice court? I mean, if there are any complaint, major complaints or. We're doing fine.
So complaints would be raised to the, if there's about the operations itself. Would be raised to the administrative office of the court for their consideration and review. If there are complaints related to attorneys operating within the court. Those are typically referred to either to the city council that somebody might bring a complaint saying prosecutors have filed a case and they want. Some direction from the council. Or they're filed with the Utah State Bar, which is our regulatory agency, which controls our certificates. Again, as you've seen, we are quite a busy operating court. And as such, from time to time, we do get complaints. Defendants feel that they've been treated unfairly or been hard done by a case or by a judge's sentence. And so, yes, those complaints have been filed and handled and addressed. I can't speak to any particular ongoing complaint or outstanding complaint. But yes, complaints have been filed because just the nature of the. The work is adversarial and sometimes emotional.
Thank you.
Are you ready for a motion?
We're ready for a motion.
I'd like to move, move, put forward a resolution by the Orem City Council requesting recertification. Of the Orem Municipal Justice Court by the Justice Court Standards Committee and the Utah Judicial Council.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
The resolution passes. Thank you. The only item left on the agenda would be item number 11. If Bren, you have any city manager information items?
Just a few quick items. Have you, obviously you saw how we unveiled our new Orem Express train today and. Was extremely popular. We will be getting that back out here really soon with our Lights On event. On Monday, November 27. And then we'll actually have it out here at our City Center Park for each Monday through December 18 thereafter. So. Looking forward to continue to have that popular amenity available. And we've got sponsorships coming in and so we'll have some some swag for you to to pass out at our Lights On event. So it's really shaping up to be. I guess, an increasingly wonderful event. We're gonna, thanks to the efforts of Bryce Merrill and Karina Eckern and our and our park staff and other city staff. We're going to have a even better event this year than than ever before. Oh, please.
So today we had two trains operating and I thought that was really slick. I can understand that maybe not on those Monday nights, but I would think on the. Lights On, we might want to see if we can rent that second train. I think you were saying you probably were going to.
Already done, yes.
He's so wise.
I wish I could take credit again. That's due to Karina and our excellent staff looking ahead and anticipating how popular that that would be. And and we have a, I guess, a developing relationship with another entity that has a similar train. Recently, we celebrated Miro's, Miro the Mammoth birthday and to do that, we we had a. A food drive. We had a really good turnout for that, filled up four Big Bins. Because of the popularity of that and because of the the demand we're hearing, we're going to continue that wonderful effort through the holidays here as well. Last thing is that our Orem Business Alliance is doing their fourth annual Standout Business Awards. And you can still submit nominations through this coming Friday. And the web link for that is at econ.orem.org/standout. So. Up to this Friday, you can still submit nominations for that award ceremony.
Thank you, Bren. And I'll just second that because we came before this meeting, we came from a dedication or the opening. Of Phase One of Hillcrest Park and. That was extremely well attended. There was a big crowd there, a lot of people excited and that was just phase one. And. I'm just gonna say, as I've seen over over the last couple of years, it just seems like we're getting bigger and bigger groups coming to these things. I think Lights On will be a really big deal and it's just exciting to see the community getting very involved in these. So it's awesome.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more.
Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
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 We'll be adjourned. Thank you for coming.